I now call to order this December 19th business meeting. Madam Treasurer, may we have a roll call?
President Goodwin?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
I believe he'll be arriving late today.
Mr. Sampson?
Present.
Ms. Wick?
Present.
Dr. Pickett?
Present.
Ms. Reiner?
Present.
Mr. Lacy?
Here.
Mr. Nicholas?
Here.
Seven present.
Please stand for the place of allegiance. Right. Dr. Lawrence, I believe we have a couple of presentations.
We do, we do. That new agenda, did we do that new agenda item? Are we gonna do that?
It is looking on my screen, but you have something on yours. It just says new agenda item. Alright, so.
Alright, you're right, well, let's get it started. Our first presentation is the Brunner Literacy Center. It's gonna be Joni Watson. I just wanna say that I made several trips to her classroom when I was the Chief of Schools and a phenomenal teacher, and I always enjoyed hanging out in your classroom. It was always my last stop on the way out. In fact, we'll take you back.
Um, no. Not that I.
I tried.
Sorry, I wear here and aids. Not that I would not want to come back, because I do love DPS, but 35 years was a long time. Hi, everyone, I'm Joni Watson, and I'm the Community Outreach Specialist and Intake Specialist for the Brunner Literacy Center. I'd like you to meet Angela Bailey. She is our Office Manager extraordinaire. I do believe I have a PowerPoint. Okay, let's get started then, thank you so much. So as I said, I'm the Community Outreach Specialist for the Brunner Literacy Center, and if you know me, you know that relationships in community is very important to me. I always say to people that we are the village, and it's up to us to take care of really everybody. So when I first started at Brunner Literacy three years ago, I was a Dayton Foundation Fellow, and I created a coalition, and DPS has been one of our coalition partners for the last three years. So about six weeks ago, Jill Hall approached our CEO, Mylett Perdona-Jones, with, hey, we've got an opportunity to get 30,000 books. So when she said that, we were like, 30,000, what does that look like? Well, it looks like that, and it looks like the semi that brought them to us and had to have a forklift, because I think what were they, 27, 27 skids of branded books? And these books were donated, Jill Hall put us in touch with them, and working together, they were donated by the Disney Corporation. And when I thought about Disney books, I thought about all these cutesy little Let It Go Frozen books, but they're beautiful books, so we had enough books so that every child in Dayton Public School could get a book preschool through high school. So can we go to the next slide, please? So our vision was that every child in Dayton Public School would get a book, and we wanted to do this before break, because this could be a president from Brunner, from Jill Hall, from DPS, from the teachers, and some students may never have had a brand-new book to take home that they could keep. So I called Dr. Lawrence, and I said, hey, how would you all like some books? And we met about it, and then Dr. Lawrence put me in touch with the wonderful Denise Gump and the wonderful Alex, and my new best friend is Daryl Glass. Daryl Glass is from Logistics, and if you do not know him and his people, you absolutely should. In fact, I took some donuts last week, because he's my new best friend. So we met a couple of times over Zoom, and I have to tell you that it was very overwhelming to us at Brunner, because we're a very small staff at eight, and we had two weeks, two weeks to put this in place. So we had no clue, like, how do you get out books to every single school, school in the district? And I said, well, I can just load up my car and just go to every school and deliver these books. Yeah, that didn't last long, because I really thought about it then. So Daryl was wonderful and said, we can do this, and this is how we can do this. So then we can go on to the next slide. So then we also wanted to be able to put labels inside of the books so that students and parents in the community know that they are from the Brunner Literacy Center, Jill Hall, and know what we do, because we are not a children's literacy center. We are an adult literacy center, and Angela will talk a little bit more about that and what we offer, but we work with adults 19 and older who have low levels of literacy. And I don't know if you know that, but one in five in Montgomery County have low levels of literacy. So what that looks like is if someone gets a medicine bottle from the doctor or a prescription, they can't read how to take their medicine. Or let's say you are a renter, and your landlord puts something on your door that says, hey, we're gonna be inspecting your apartment next week, they may not be able to read that as well. I work, I volunteer at the Dream Center a couple of times a week, and it always floors me just how many people that don't have their GED. Or maybe they have their GED, and they need help with like Sinclair or Central Right State. So that's what we do. So here you see our lovely on the right, Brunner Literacy Center was founded by three Sisters of the Precious Blood. We have a very close relationship with the Sisters of the Precious Blood, and I think that's Sister Helen on the right, who is one of the founders of Precious Blood. So, or one of the founders of Brunner. So they have been instrumental in helping us, because I had to call out the troops. They come out to have a lot of friends on Facebook, because I put out the plea, we need help, because we only had two weeks. So we had former DPS teachers that are retired, that came out and helped us put labels on books. We had librarians from the Metro Library who are retired. So we had two weeks to put labels inside of 30,000 books. Okay, the next slide, please. So my fabulous Daryl Glass and the Logistics team told, sent the enrollment sheet. I have to admit, when I saw that, I was like, oh my gosh, how are we gonna do this? But we did it. So all those boxes that you see stacked up, first we had to separate the books, because they didn't come separated by age groups. They were just kinda like thrown in these big boxes. So we had to separate by age groups, by schools, by classrooms, but we did it. We got it all done. So that's kinda showing you what Brunner Literacy Center looked like for about two weeks. Next slide, please. And I was so excited, I have to tell you, this new truck amazes me. I think it is so pretty, the new DPS truck. I mean, that's like big time, it's really nice. So I think that's Danny and David, is that their names? Who were, I mean, they even came in and smiled when they saw those boxes. So they were such a dream to work with. They made our lives so much easier, and it just made me feel good that, you know, my home, DPS, since fifth grade all the way through high school, has so many caring and loving people that are working there. And then on the right, our first stop, because we decided to actually go and take pictures at three schools, thank you Alex and Denise and whoever, and Dr. Lawrence and Pinky Schools. First, we went to my home building, Horace Mann, you knew I was gonna go to Horace Mann. And we went into a kindergarten class, and Jill Hall brought snacks for them, and they were so excited to get their books, so that's a picture of them. And then we also went to Thurgood, where Chief Dooley and Dr. Lawrence Metus at Thurgood, and Chief Spurlock was with us at Horace Mann. And then, and it was interesting, because the man who was from the news, and I can't remember what station he was from, Channel 7 maybe?
Two.
Two. He really talked to the students about the importance of being in school, and I'm pretty sure he said he was a Thurgood grad. So, you know, DPS just touches so many people's lives in so many ways, and it reaffirms how much we love this district. So, and after Thurgood, we went to E.J. Brown, Edwin Joel Brown, and we went into a student with special needs classroom and realized that the books that we had brought for them were too high, even though it was a middle school. So, excuse me, I went back the next day and brought them a whole set of books that were more age-appropriate for the special needs class. And she mentioned that she was starting a library, a classroom library, so we also brought her some extra books as well for the classroom library. Next slide, please. And, oh, you have to go back to that one and click play, please. There should be, it should show up on the bottom, maybe? If you click on that, there it goes. Now click on it again. This is high tech. Okay, there should be sound. There's really nice music with this. But these are just some pictures, thank you Allison Kate, of the students getting the books. They were all really excited. Every child in DPS preschool all the way through high school got a brand-new book. Thank you. So all day today, I've been getting lots of phone calls, lots of texts, a lot of Facebook messages. Thank you so much, Joni, to you and Brunner. Our students love the books, they're so excited, they're very proud. And then it almost broke my heart when a teacher said to me, even one of our teachers was almost in tears, because she just doesn't have the money to spend on presents for all her students, but this has enabled her to give a present to all her students. Thank you to Dr. Lawrence and Denise and Alex and everybody who has helped us do this. It was a lot, but we are so proud that we were able to work as well with you, because it was seamless. And now Angela's gonna talk a little bit about what we do at Brunner.
We did have a lot of those in books. I don't care if I ever see one again, I'm glad my daughter's older, because I'm gonna have to work through that and let it go. Do you can go to the next slide, please. So Brunner offers four core programs, Adult Basic Education, that brings everyone up that comes to the program up to the sixth grade proficient level, and that prepares them for the GED. Honestly, sometimes we just get some older folks in, and they say, I wanna read to my grandchildren. And they may never be interested in GED, although we really talk it up, and they just wanna read to their children, so they come in and they go through our Adult Basic Education, and we help them and empower them to do that. The next slide, after they're ready, done with that, they are ready for our GED preparation. This Brunner, what we specialize in, what sets us apart from any other tutoring other than being free, is it is one-on-one, and so it's not a classroom full of people that are at all different levels. When they come in, they take the T A, eleven, twelve, and we, and I tell everybody that calls on the phone, and they're a little nervous, maybe, you know, a lot of emotion come with admitting what you might need, and I tell them that it just gives us a baseline of where you're at and where your strengths are and where you need a little bit of help. Then that tells us where to set you up in the curriculum, and then that helps us also to match you with the right tutor, because we know our tutors really well. And we know kind of by the personality of the student sometimes, and the personality of the tutor, of who's gonna work really well together. So I'm very proud of that, and really, they become family, that's what we are. We have a lot of fun together, and so the GED gets them ready for all four sections of the GED. We do give them practice tests throughout that, and to let them know where they are when they start hitting some of those milestones and some of their goals. We give them a practice test, and we wait for that little magic number and give them the thumbs up to go and take the actual real test. The next program, the next slide, is our continuing education. So this one's really exciting, because I've seen personally, since I've been there since February, someone just call in and say, hey, I wanna go back to school to be a nurse after not going to school for a very long time, and what can you do for me? And so she literally brought her nursing entrance exam book to us, and we helped her go through it. And, and now she's gonna be one of our tutors someday, I know it, her husband is too. So that gets them ready for preparation for college entry. We've also actually started to see a wave. Currently, we have two DPS graduates that came through through the COVID years, and they're like, hey, I'm in this program, and I just need a little extra help. And if you guys have ever priced out tutoring, it's outrageously expensive, and it's completely free for everyone. And so we help them through whatever program they're going through. Continuing Ed, a lot of times, someone, a father, someone a little older couldn't be in a job that has been grandfathered under a lot of things, but now some new tech come up, tech issues come up, and they need to learn a new skill. We've even had people come in and saying, hey, I gotta learn how to use my smartphone, because now I have to clock in on this baby, right? And that's, that's a whole new thing for a generation. So we are empowering everybody to, to keep up with what they need to do to live their lives. The next slide, we also have a lot of ELL students, and this is one thing that I see with my kids going to Stivers and doing a lot of stuff there, whenever I see parents soccer games, and I hear them talking like, hey, can see us, you know, we'll help you. And, and they help us even more than we help them a lot of times, I think. But our English language learners, again, we have students from every continent, every country. We've gone through it, it was like over 43, I think, at our last count. And, and they come through, they work on their English. Some of them are beginner, and they don't speak any when they first come to us. And some of them are advanced and just need to work on conversational. Then we also do a lot of citizenship prep, and we've had four citizens, I think, four people just this year passed our citizenship test, which is a great thing to say for them, because it takes them like six years anyway. So why is this important to DPS? Because a big part of what Brunner Literacy is about is about family literacy. And being a sub previously in DPS, one thing that I can say is that I know how important it is for those parents to be reading at home, for, for, you know, grandparents and aunties and uncles and even older siblings to see that and encourage that throughout a child's life. It makes such a huge difference. And so we also, the next slide, plug for tutors, one of, like I said, we're like a family, and we have a lot of retired teachers after taking a little time off, and that itch is still there, and they need to scratch it. Once an educator, always an educator, honestly, look at Joni, right? And so we always be tutors, and we're just so happy to be partnered with DPS and with all of you, and we look forward, congratulations on your test scores coming up to 23, and hopefully, as a community, we can all work on that together.
And that's slide, one more slide, please. Actually, two, this is our contact information. You can call us, that's our address. Next slide, please. So not only were we able to give every child in DPS a brand-new book before the break, we also gave books to DECA, Horizon, Miami Valley School, A. Rand, A. Hillup-Brandoff Institute, Northridge Schools, Troutwood Schools, and Emerson Academy will be giving them in January. Lastly, community outreach is what I do. I've done a couple of the fabulous family literacy nights with Ms. Worley. I've done resource tables, I also did the open house at Heiser. I am available to come and speak in your buildings, to speak to parent groups. I can also do intakes, because that's what I do as well. I gave Denise, I think, has them my business card and a couple of cards about Brunner, so if those could be given to the principals, I'm more than happy to come speak or do whatever is needed. So thank you so much for giving us the opportunity.
Before you guys go, I would also like to say thank you for the books, because today I seen a Percy Jackson book and I bought it, and I was so happy.
We have lots of those.
Two chapters in, and I can't wait to go see them.
Well, if you want some more of those, come see us, because we have quite a few.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any comments or anything from the board? Thank you, I'm excited to see the books. I mean, I have a challenge in my own household where we have to do a book a month, so it is great to see 30,000 flourish throughout the Dayton region. So I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Again, there's books out there, so please would help yourselves, because we are not taking them home. You take them home. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Great, our next presentation.
Our next presentation, Dr. Goodwin, is our third grade reading test scores by Mindy Clark, our Director of Assessment and Accountability, and we are so glad you're back. The team was down one, we're back to full strength now. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Dr. Goodwin, Board members, Treasurer, Raha, Dr. Lawrence. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, get to share some wonderful news this evening. So we're gonna start off with talking about third grade reading proficiency. And proficiency is defined as greater than scoring at least a 700 on the fall OST, is what actually what we're talking about. And so we compared 20, fall 2018 scores to fall '22 and fall '23. And fall '23 is significantly above either of the two other years. So we are at almost 23% in proficiency for this year, which is wonderful. And so then there's also the definition of students needing that promotion score for the third grade reading guarantee, and this, and that's currently at greater than a 690, greater than or equal to a 690. And our promotion score is a little bit lower than it was in fall of 2018. However, we have a significant number more students who actually met that proficiency score. And so we have 31% of our kids who met the promotions score, and that does include our proficient kids, that percentage. And so I know in here, you can probably barely see those school names and whatnot. However, this is really a chart that shows you how many schools, and it is 87% of our schools, showed growth from the year before in third grade reading proficiency. So there were really only four schools who didn't show growth, and one school was actually at a 0%. And so this slide is really kind of exciting, because this is the fall-to-spring proficiency. And so if you, if you think about it in fall, which is the blue bar, and spring, which is the yellow bar, historically, it is generally about twice, if not greater, the percentage of increase, or we double the number of proficient students, or proficiency doubles. And so it is kind of exciting to think that we're currently at almost 23% and what that can look like for the spring. So just some, some interesting details and facts about the scores. The lowest score this year was significantly higher. So our children who scored the lowest scored significantly higher this year than last year's students who scored the lowest. Even our high score was higher than last year's highest score. The mode of the distribution, so the score that had the most scores was significantly higher, and as well, our average score was higher. And so the scores are just distributed much higher when looking at the distribution of scores. And one of the interesting things, because we went back to, okay, why did all of this happen? Our third grade attendance went up, and so we increased that attendance by about 2.6%. And so we only looked from August to November, because that's in that timeframe from when students took the test. Not, we have not looked to where we are currently. We were looking in that timeframe from when they tested. And then, and so that was for third grade students only. And then when you look overall at a district where we are in that chronic attendance, we've increased the number or the percentage of students who are on track as a district by almost 800 kids. When you, when you look at the number of students, it's eight, it's 800 students. When you look at the percent of students, it's five, you have 5.3%, but that's, that equates to about 800 kids being on track, which is significant. And that's through like the beginning of the summer. So I'm gonna invite Ms. Spurlock to come up, because we wanted to talk about what did the schools do? Because I think it's important to know what we did to actually affect these numbers. And so you may have heard earlier where we talked about Operation Report Card, where we met with principals about the state report card details. And then.
And then our schools designed a plan focusing on how they were gonna do, beginning in August all the way up to this point, what they were gonna do to increase attendance, focus on instruction, especially focusing on those essential standards. And many of their action plans also included, what are they gonna do with small group instruction? How are they gonna focus on the needs of the individual students? We also talked about working on and making sure that we have a focus on looking at those scores and also focusing on how are we going to make sure that our short-cycle assessments are focusing on specifically what they're gonna be tested on and focusing on its standard. So we used the Assessment Authoring System, and what we focused on was specifically making sure that our tests align with the OST, so it's a practice to see. So we did a pre, and then we did instruction focusing on it, and then we did a post, making sure that we were monitoring along the way. At the beginning of the year, we also used to develop our plan, our DIBELS, our MAP Fall Assessment, to develop that plan, and those essential standards specifically were reading literacy text, reading informational text, and writing. And then that monitoring piece was that Assessment Authoring System, but also our DUB DIBELS to look at that throughout the plan. We also, oops, we're still, we're still also looking at that co-teaching model that we moved to, with focusing on professional development to supporting those teachers, and then coaching and feedback, not only from the curriculum department, but also from our administrative team. And then, of course, we had professional development on the science of reading, professional learning communities. We did a lot of focus on that with our principals on our Saturday session in order to drill down to our BLTs, and then also our TBTs, and focus specifically on the needs of those students. And then coming from there, we also are gonna be working at, right now, our fall data. OST data came back, we've met with principals. OST data came back. We've met with principals and we've kind of drilled down on that data. And then we met with our teams. And right now we are actually planning for what is gonna be that third day of plan for second semester.
Thank you for the presentation. Board, the board, any questions?
What is the fall, what is the fall test? What are the fall tests taken?
They're taken in October.
Okay.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions myself. It's always good to hear that we're on the rise here. And I think I asked this one in email too. How, what's the growth from, from spring to now?
So, so last year, we are, from last spring, we are about nine point five percent behind currently where we ended up last spring. Which is, which is why I kind of look at what happens from fall to spring and what is our potential for where we're going to go.
So even in the year, the years you guys compared, is it our normal trend that from, we have, in the past, have we dropped from spring to fall?
Yes.
About how much of a percentage?
It usually drops significantly more than we dropped this year. It's usually fifteen to twenty percent.
And what do you think that is attributed to?
The beginning of the year, students haven't, students and teachers, they haven't necessarily covered all of that curriculum.
Okay. And I saw, actually, I saw on the mail before I saw here, the academic plan that's coming out that has like this slew of goals that we have that, and my assumption is those are, even over the break, I believe there's some reading challenges and those type of things. Can you just talk a little bit about what that, what that program is and what the intent and what we're hoping to gain, especially over the two weeks that we're, we're out of school?
We're gonna have Chief Sheehy come in because that is a focused Haggerty model, and she's gonna delve, I mean, delve into that.
I'd like to shoot, shine.
So this year we did implement some strategies across K two and three to support our science of reading strategies. And so this is just a carryover of that so that students do not stop those strategies while we're on break and lose learning. And it's also, it also helps the parents to get a glimpse of what happens in the classroom every day. The Haggerty is something that the classroom teachers do every day that takes about ten minutes. So it's just a routine to go over phonemic awareness skills. And so again, these are videos that our teachers have made. So we had our teachers come in and do the practices on video. And then we're pushing those out to families so that they can learn those strategies and do them at home and keep students engaged in the strategies that they're used to practicing every day.
Okay. So maybe I got a different letter because I didn't know it was a video. Do different letters go out based on, I mean, on the level of child in the home?
No, there's a QR code. And then on the sheet, there are days. And every day, there's a link. If you don't use the link, you can use the QR code to just do audio. So if you're in the car and want your kids to practice, they can hear it and practice the strategies that way.
Okay. In addition to the newsletter that was pushed out, are there other ways that people follow our page? I mean, they talk about everything else. Is there a way that they can help us keep encouraging other people to click those links and just see what it's about?
Absolutely. So we actually met with some of our community partners and pushing it out as well. Giving, it's on our website, it's on social media. Our principals individually sent messages out. And like I said, we met with community partners to share the challenge with them so that they can share with families in the community and get the word out as well. And I think maybe the newspaper, I know the last time we did it, because we did it during our last break, and the newspaper shared it as well.
Do we have it tipped up? Because people we trying to get to, they definitely on TikTok. I'm, well, I'll be honest with you, I don't read the newspaper. I get it every day and I walk right back.
Well, I read it on my, I get an alert on my phone. So the alert came over my phone.
It was shared through Parent Square with all parents.
But the news alert came on my phone.
You know, Mr. Walker is coming on the board and he, he stay on TikTok. So if you need an expert to help us with content development, you got one of the most active users of all the social sites at your disposal. You are, hey, as the former youngest of us all, I'm just saying, it's just a good place. If we're really trying to connect with these individuals, like I think it's great to have tools. We need to get them to the individuals who are at least likely to get them and to get their interest in them to get to our younger individuals. We gotta meet them where they're actually gonna go to, which, you know, Facebook is for older individuals. It is. It's our place. It's safe. We know what's happening there. We understand things. TikTok and all those other places, they get away from us a little bit. So any type of way or any strategy that we can get this to get more individuals on it. And I imagine you guys have a matrix to check or to see how much usage it, it got out of it over the break?
Yes.
And is it possible for us to get that information when we come back just to see how, how much it was used?
Yes.
Or utilized? And are the videos on YouTube or what are they on?
They're on our page. We own the content.
So it goes directly to the website page?
I think they're in Google Drive.
Okay. And it doesn't require a passcode or anything like that to get in? It's been tested overly just to make sure?
Mm-hmm, yes. I mean, anything can happen. Our link can break at any time, but we're actively monitoring that.
And is it, is it easy to share that link to someone else?
Yes. Anyone with access to the link can open it.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I would just like to thank you all for this presentation. I'm so proud of the work that you have done and our teachers have done and our students have done. This is a credit to every single person in our buildings who dedicates their work towards educating our kids. And I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, Dr. Lawrence. Actually, I believe this one is, go ahead.
Spectacular job, team. It's an honor to be part of the team and I appreciate all that you do. This is, I'm excited about this presentation of school closing. So school closing is a big deal in the community, like how we do it. So we're gonna talk to you about kind of how the sausage is made and how we come to a decision about closing school. I do wanna say that there's a philosophy behind it as well. And we're adhering to this philosophy that says we wanna respect our staff members and families. And we have a window this year between eight PM and one o'clock to make a decision to close schools so that families can have babysitting or find ways to make sure that their kids are taken care of the next day. We do not anticipate doing this at three, four, five o'clock in the morning. If we're wrong, we're wrong. We wanna certainly respect and honor community members that are out there who are, who are parents and our staff members. We're trying to get to work. So Craig Anderson and my man Rob Hunter want to explain today about the process. Good to see operations in the house.
Good evening, Dr. Goodwine, Dr. Lawrence, more members of the treasury. We appreciate the opportunity to cover school closing, the process we follow, the procedures, to make this very important decision and feed our information to Dr. Lawrence so we can make a great decision for the safety of staff and our students. I'm gonna start at the beginning, kind of reiterate what we do, summarize after. Mr. Hunter will go with some very exciting new things that we're gonna do this year. So what we do, we figure out several things going to a decision we make as far as school closing. The weather, when it arrives, you know, mountain snow, for example, the ability to clear the lots, the parking lots of the schools, the sidewalks, streets, you know, there's always a priority on the highways, the main streets. The sidewalks are a important part of that. Then the fair fares and the residential areas kind of fall behind that. Freezing rain, ice, snow, those things present a more challenging type of atmosphere. So we have to keep that in mind. The wind and wind chill are a couple of the factors, and obviously the temperature. So all of that goes and comes into play when we make a decision as far as what is it safe for our students and staff to attend a school like that. So we monitor the weather this weekend, for example. We have a group chat, Mr. Hunter threw together, Chief Ryan, Dr. Lawrence, all of us are on there. I was getting paid. I saw a couple of messages, you know, about a town. We had some weather potential hazardous conditions yesterday, and we saw that and it was a park clear sign given out. So, but wanna reiterate, the most important thing in any decision we make is for the safety of the students and our staff. For example, we have some staff members, I know we do probably several departments. A mechanic, for example, lives near, lives from Indiana, starts working at four. So he may be on the road by three thirty. We wanna try to make it earlier call as far as school closing. And I, as Dr. Lawrence mentioned previous evening. There are times when buses will not be able to travel safely on the road because of a high amount, a large amount of snow or because of drifting cars. That's something we really keep an eye on throughout the night. We won't. My team has dropped around in the middle of the night, which isn't safe. But we have some experts, those that have done it for many years. But we're trying to mitigate that using things that are currently available for us essentially. So we'll keep working on that. But many roads over time may be cleared after a morning snowfall. So things may look great at ten AM, but during the night, six AM, four AM, it may be a little dicey. So our residential streets often remain unchecked for a period of time because of, again, the city of Dayton may focus on the name rules. And we're focused on the school. So some of the residential areas are remaining somewhat hazardous throughout the day. Takes a little longer to get to those. So the district, we just try to make a decision about closing schools as soon as possible, as Dr. Lawrence mentioned, to allow families to adequately prepare. We know there's some childcare and things that need to be considered to make that decision. However, the weather may roll in a little bit later or early in the morning. So in those cases, say at six AM, seven AM, we may need to make that call. But five AM is when we want to make that call for today. So depends on when the weather arrives. Again, we monitor that proceeding to a big weather front and even a night before. So when the district is closed, very important, extra critical areas of activity, field trips that the bus drivers handle, we say those are gonna be canceled. However, afternoon, evening, sports events, basketball, for example, volleyball, those may still go on. And that's where Chief Jones will work with Dr. Lawrence and others to make those calls. So we really wanna reiterate that, that if the games are gonna continue, our social media, the news, et cetera, Channel seven, Channel twenty-two, Channel forty-five, that will be on there. So more information will come there. Parent Square, but also parent party at the end of the week. The school closing notifications that we follow, automated phone calls, we all have our phones, our text messages, emails. Parent Square, again, very important. Also on the district's social media, so Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. We'll get TikTok going if it's not already. Everyone is doing it. And I actually, I have a TikTok. I don't, you don't know what I'm working on that, but we want to do that. And alert on the DPS website, very critical there, what link it's in there with communication. Then obviously the WDT and WTO, they'll take the information will be out there as well on the TV for those who watch the TV. So what's new? First of all, I want your TikTok. I wanna see what you do on TikTok.
I wanna see it too.
What's new? First of all, no, we actually have our own meteorologist. So.
We do.
Adriana Davies is the meteorologist. We actually having that in our back pocket helps us a lot. On, just on yesterday, we were looking at the situation. We were getting all kinds of notifications. We're on a different notification, weather notification now that the city of Dayton, we partner with the city of Dayton on, ensure that they're gonna be able to take care of all of the roadways for us. Because if the Brown's guys can take care of everything at every school, we still can't get our buses around. So the partnership, we collaborated with the city of Dayton. And what we do is myself and Fred Scovall, we sit down the night prior when the events are gonna happen. As we get to the events, we sit down the night prior to talk about what they're gonna do. So we actually have purchased two trucks to bribe. So this is something new for us. We're gonna be bribing more at our schools. We're also gonna be looking at areas that, we identify areas that our buses travel, such as the areas over, over Wyoming, between Purcell over by Cleveland on down a couple blocks to Phillips Avenue. So those are a lot of hills. So what we're doing is we're gonna take on, the city cannot bribe in those areas. So because they have so much to take care of, our staff will be bribing those areas. We'll be salving those areas to make sure our bus, our kids are gonna be safe. Also, East Fairview on down to Hillcrest, those are hills. Those are areas that our buses travel. They're real tight spaces. So we're gonna be out and we're gonna bribe around those areas to make sure that our buses are being able to travel up and down for the kids. So that is, that's what's new. Also, we've looked at some of our schools, like the city of Dayton, they have a tier process. So they have three tiers. They have tier one is for all the main areas. Tier two is mostly the bus, the RTA bus travel routes. And then tier three is the residential areas. So with that, what we've done is we looked at, we identified with the city of Dayton, all of our schools. So they have a map and they drop all of our schools, all of our bus routes in their map. And what they're looking at now is around every school. So that's all the four streets that are around the school. They're gonna ensure that they take care of those streets for us. So in return, we're gonna actually help them on areas that they have to. And that's where the collaboration with us bribing and us salving, and that's where that came from. So that was just that partnership. But then we also have schools such as Bell Haven. Bell Haven is, it hits two areas. It has, it, the city of Dayton, Free Pike is the city of Dayton. Redunda and the streets behind are here some township. So we're trying to work with the county right now, but until that we finalize everything, our guys will be taking care of Redunda because that's the street that the buses come in to the back of Bell Haven. So we wanna ensure that all the streets that the bus travel are being taken care of. So that's our partnership. Next slide. Here's some, some streets or some areas, and this is the area that I talked about, kind of blurry. But this is Cleveland. And as you see, all of that area at the lower part, it takes you to Belmont. Well, six blocks over, which will take you straight over to, to Phillips. That street takes you straight from Wyoming straight up here to Belmont Park lot. So that's the reason why we're gonna, we're gonna be bribing all of those areas because our buses travel a lot up in that area. Keep touch on that slide. This, this slide here is an area off of Main Street. EJ Brown is right down in the corner. And we'll take care of from across Main, which is East Fairview. We'll take that on over to Hillcrest, and those are, are just areas that, they are very hilly and those are areas that we identify that buses have issues with in their tight spaces. So we wanna ensure that our kids are safe on the buses. So next slide. And then this is Bell Haven. So behind Bell Haven, as I stated, was just an area of Redunda and some streets that are not actually city of Dayton. They do, they do not have the jurisdiction to take care of those. So until we actually get a formal partnership with the county, we're gonna be... So, until we actually get a formal partnership with the county, we're going to be taking care of those areas to ensure um, the buses are getting, get, get to the locations safe. We also added, um, radios into every truck. So, if a bus has a problem, where last year we had an issue where we had a bus that was stuck up at, um, Third and Gettysburg. So, now we're going to be able to call the guys on the radio versus having to call their cell phones and figure that kind of stuff. So, that's what's new. And as, uh, Mr. Anderson said, um, before he told us about the TikTok. Any sporting events, we, we don't really want to cancel. Uh, the grounds guys are pretty excited about being able to make sure that our schools are going to be taking care of for the young. Athletes will get a chance to participate in that afternoon, a lot of times. We can get it done far too, if we just cancel it early in the morning. So, and that'll help athletics from not having to cancel the reschedule games.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions? I got a couple. Only because I'm heavily in snow removal right now at my actual job, right? So, where are we getting, do we have a partnership to get brine, like where are we getting it from?
ODOT. So, we, we get, we have a partnership with ODOT. The city and the county have a partnership, but we haven't broken it down yet. Right now, we're getting everything from ODOT.
Okay.
Now, well, ODOT, we could talk later on, because we were just in a, um, some of the day from Ohio, from ODOT, they're giving out money, so we can actually possibly get our own equipment to become a brine to, to have brine done at our facility. So, that's something that we just received today about around three o'clock. So, we're going to actually talk to this file and how to work that.
I'm so happy to ask you that question, because I'm going to take that back to my job, that's good to know. Second.
Hey, these are called.
Hey, tips to the second, the, um, looking at, well, you were looking at our schools that are outside of Dayton jurisdiction. Have you, I know you said the county, but I think, I believe Harrison Township, the township is responsible for the roads on the township road, similar to how some of our streets, like I know we have some buses that go in Jefferson, that are Dayton or Jefferson. So, just a tip, you might want to reach out to the township administration to try to get a partnership there to see how we can work with them, as they're generally more responsible for their roads. And the county is responsible for the county roads that go through those areas, so. So, you may be calling the wrong place, which is why you don't have a partnership on that one. Uh, let's see. Have we ever considered, because I know you're talking about getting more modern technology for you guys to see stuff when you're out there. I see a ton of drones that fly by my house all the time. And although I do not like them, it may be something to consider for you all if you are looking in that area that kind of allows you to cover more things than just driving up there. I don't know if you guys have ever considered that or not, have you ever considered it?
No, so, our, with the city, we don't leave drones, because they actually tell us how much they have already taken care of. So, they tell us all the streets and everything that they've already done. So, in the morning, we don't have to drive around anymore. The city actually gives us, uh, when we call in the morning, you get called, our, our set time is around one o'clock. We'll already know he's only taking care of twenty percent of the streets, or this has been done, these areas have been taken care of. So, we don't, with the city, now the drones could possibly be something we take care of when we talk about the townships and and the county areas, that could be something. But as far as the city, they actually will, they'll be telling us exactly what they've already taken care of.
I hear you on that one, but as a resident in the city, they may say they hit my street, but they didn't hit it. That first snow seems to get away from them for some reason. But yeah, just maybe some of you guys may want to consider yourself to kind of help you out with your process on that one. And then, other than that, my only other thing, is I think you guys have to put Twitter and put, form, uh, put X formerly known as Twitter. If you guys want, you know, give them their proper new name, whatever they're going, they're going through identity crisis, so. But thank you, that's, that's all I had, Board Member Sampson.
I tried to fight saying this, the last thing Mr. Hunter needs is a drone.
Well, if, if he can get on TikTok, I should be able to get a drone.
Uh, Board Member Ryan, wait one second, don't go just yet.
Uh, I want to thank you for letting the public know the process that goes into this. I think, um, a lot of people just think of this arbitrary call. We take the safety and security of our bus drivers and our students and everybody very seriously. I did think that you neglected to mention one of the greatest indicators of inclement weather. And as the parent of a, um, several children in school, I want you to know that putting a white crayon under your pillow and a spoon and flushing um, ice cubes down the toilet is the greatest indicator for me that school will be canceled, but I think, that's what, that's what they do. They go through a whole process and it's there. That's how they, that's how they tell you guys that we need to cancel school, so, just so you know.
I have one more question for you guys, how many drivers do we have that actually operate the trucks that remove snow?
So, we have twenty drivers now, we have twenty drivers. We have, let me make sure, so we have nine, well, twelve plows that'll be out. Um, three of which are, are larger dump trucks, and then we have nine, uh, F two fifties that are out. And then, we also have six of which have salt, uh, salt dogs on the back of them.
And I would say I am rooting for snow days that happen from Wednesday until the first day of school happens. So, we can just knock it all out right now and not have any disruption to our whole school schedule. I know children are opposite of me, but that's kind of where I am on my journey right now.
I think, I think, um, I mean, I, you've probably explained this to people before, but I, I think a lot of people don't understand why we can't rip, uh, reasonably do an hour delay or a, a short delay if you want to, or if anyone wants to. Just go over that subject, why it's, it's not, unless I'm wrong, it's not a feasible option for Dayton Public School.
So, so that was something that we actually had talked about. It was our understanding from some previous, that the hour delay caused a problem with parents. Um, because parents who have, um, adequate way to get the kids to school, and they may have already done the work and things of that nature. So, that was the reason for the not going with the two hour delay. And it, but I, I believe that's still something that we could look at.
Okay. I thought, I thought the routing system was maybe too complex to allow for, I'm trying to make it wrong.
That's a great question.
Not from a bus perspective, and also what Mr. Hunter mentioned is very key, but also our staff, sometimes they can confuse some of the transportation employees. My route tipping starts at six thirty, so it, it seems simple, but at times, on the path, I think it led to some pretty significant confusion on the transportation side. So, that's why I think it has been a sign away from an hour, two hour delay, but it's something to keep in mind.
Maybe our transportation system can handle.
So, it is something that you guys can do, so when we make a decision, if it's something you're going to utilize this year or not? That's kind of my question.
Uh, we will not be utilizing that this year, it's a, it's a long-term process. As you mentioned before, we've just now stabilized transportation. We actually need a few more drivers to make that happen. And then there are some other logistics and protocol pieces to that.
For everyone at home, we are not doing, we cannot do delays. If you didn't, you want to say it again, for the people one more time? I got you. Dayton Public Schools will not have hour, two hours, or any type of days, either we are open or we are closed. Nothing in between, is that correct?
That is correct, and ice cubes and, uh, two buses and all that, make sure that's, that's as well.
All right, any other questions? Thank you guys.
Well, no, I didn't, I didn't. Is it, what's, is there like a certain temperature that our trucks are, are really will not? Yeah, what, at what temperature are, are our buses really not going to start, I guess?
The buses have heaters, that's a good question, I'll get back, uh, to you with the, um, I will find out from our garage, but I could just based up on my time here, I started in January, there were no issues with the starting buses, they did not have heaters. So, I don't believe in my two years, it was below, say, maybe the low, low double digits, so, but I could find it out.
Yeah, he'll get, he'll get back with you, but typically five to ten degrees, but he'll double check it. At that point, we start to have issues.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question based on his question. So, we talked about the delay from like snow, ice and all that. What's the temperature number of when it's too cold for our people, our children to be outside and wait for us to go to school? Or is there a temperature number?
We talked about that, and what did we come up with? There was a wind chill, wind field number, and I can't remember what that number was. Uh, we'll post it on the website, and I, I think Adrian and I's over there, uh, that's right, our meteorologists, get me together. Get me together, that's boy, that's dynamite team.
Just so people can know, there is a, there's a temperature now.
Yeah, because I think there was a message that you said that it had to be in the single digits.
Thank you, Dr. Pickett, yeah. No, we're, we're talking about to go to school, and yeah, we did, so we'll, we'll, she's, I see her over there typing right now, because we want to tell the general public what that number is.
We're having trouble finding it, but we think it was twenty degrees that the bus doors stopped opening properly. So, that was Brandon House.
So, they're going to come back to us when that was, kind of a definite number, so people will, will know. Board Member Sampson, did you have something? Okay, so, for people who view and watch us, they are going to, the team, someone here, they're all going to be together and figure out that number, and they will post it. So, you do not have to wonder, what is the number of when the district will close due to it being too cold to travel to the.
Uh, Chief, there we go, meteorologist.
Can you come to the mic?
Yes.
Thank you. They want to see where you are anyway, so they can go, well, she said it was gonna.
Um, we wrote down here that negative, at negative twenty degrees, the buses do stop starting and doors stop opening. At twenty degrees or below, the buses do start to freeze over, and then at a ten degree wind chill, the frostbite will occur within fifteen to thirty minutes, so students standing out at bus stops in that window was a concern, so. That's what I wrote down, that was what we were talking about out loud.
Okay, so you guys still need to get together.
So, we'll, we'll take that information and compile a small range of numbers, and then we'll put it on a banner so everybody can see it.
All right, anything else? Mr. Nichols, you got anything, this affects you more than us, so. All right, thank you. Mr. Nichols is ready, and I'm getting any weather. All right, next up, we have hearing of the bargaining units. Are there any bargaining units here today to speak? I don't see any. You're mistaken, all right. Madam Treasurer, do we have anyone registered to speak from the public?
Yes.
Okay, let me go a couple things, do we have a timer anywhere in this room, still not, two weeks ago. Twenty twenty-four, we're going to have a clock in here. Please let me share remark, or your remarks will be limited to three minutes. I will be the timekeeper for you, and you will hear it for the time. Yeah, that one don't need, but you put it up there too, but I still got you up here. Uh, let's see, it's inappropriate to discuss any matter involving pending disputes, grievances under a labor agreement, disciplinary actions involving an employee or student, ongoing labor negotiations, concerns or matters that have already been settled and are any matters which because of its nature is deemed appropriate to be discussed in executive session. The purpose of the public hearing portion of the meeting is for members of the public to express viewpoints and public concerns. Go ahead, Madam Treasurer.
Georgia Cox.
And please state your name and address when you come to the podium.
Good evening, my name is Georgia Cox at forty-one ninety-one Maple Leaf Drive in Dayton, four by four one six. Um, my comments will be very brief. I was here last month, and I understand I had the opportunity to meet with the interim superintendent. And at that time, I was led to believe that the board may be of the impression that my request is not one that you can help me with because you believe it's legal in nature. And so, I have prepared a few documents just to help you understand, um, why it is that I've started here, because yes, there is a legal aspect, but before the law gets involved, um, there are triggering, um, um, incidents, sometimes we call them antecedent causes or, um, probable cause. There has to be something that triggers the law to feel they have a reason to get involved. And in this situation, that's what happened, and that is what I'm asking. You, I have been on the side of the law, and I've been told this is where I need to start. The law needs to understand that maybe there was an error or mistake with that before they would do anything. And so, I'll just hand this to the treasurer, and, um, you can look at them. You have ways to contact me if you need any further information, thank you.
Thank you.
David Ezrato.
David Ezrato, one thirteen Bombers Street. Like to thank Board Member Sampson for his service for the last four years. He's done this in a magical way. He is not a therapist, this, she has been positive. He has done a good job of listening to the public. I sat and watched Alma Group's presentation, I saw sixty percent of the public that was participating. Said we don't need to search for a superintendent. What we do need is some training for this board. This board runs four-hour meetings, this board runs six-hour meetings. This board likes to play gotcha with people who come up here that work for it. In public, on camera, asking questions, just shooting from the head. That's not your job. It's rude, it's impolite, and it makes people look bad. You made Dr. Lawrence look bad by making minimum payment less than what you would normally have to pay an emergency person to come in and be a superintendent. You've disrespected this community over and over and over by retaining Dr. Lawley, who never went through any kind of process. You just put her in place. We've seen already, she couldn't get the students to school, she couldn't instruct them, she couldn't get the third grade reading levels, she couldn't get bus drivers to show up. I don't know what you need to see that you now have confident leadership, and I don't know how you learn to unlearn the behaviors you have. Talking about TikTok, that's for your PIO, and that's something that you ask a question in writing in advance and ask for a presentation. You don't sit here and just talk for the sake of talking. You don't sit here and ask all these things, they're making presentations, go by the presentation. If you have questions about the presentation, by all means, questions about the presentation are great. But, just talking to hear yourself talk, you have staff here that probably accounts for two, three thousand dollars an hour. I mean, at least that, never mind the public that comes. You need to learn how to show some respect for them in one concise, sharp meetings that actually accomplish something. Because, like it or not, Dr. Lawrence is accomplishing something, and he's doing it in spite of this board. So, take the remaining funds you have allocated for the Alma Group, and take lessons on how to be a better board, because nobody would want to come and apply there that's worked a lick, to work for a board that behaves the way you do in public. I'd like to commend Ms. Ryan for saying some positive things at this meeting, and that's what we need more of, thank you.
Any other speakers?
No.
All right. Dr. Lawrence, your first recommendation.
Dr. Goodwin, I recommend the waiver of the forty-eight hour rule to present the human resources recommendations as listed.
Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
In the second, any questions? Seeing none, then we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Miss Reyna?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Next recommendation?
Uh, Dr. Goodwin, for our previous conversation, this is that space, right?
Yeah, I just put the, you just gotta put the recommendation out first.
Uh, I recommend approval of the following human resources agenda, section D.
Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? I would like to pull on the forty-eight hour waiver one, number one and two. To be voted on after exec session. Anything else? All right, seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. I do wanna make a note that I'm excited to see that Belmont has a head girls wrestling coach. I would love to see females do more sports.
I recommend approval of the following human resources DEA after July tenth.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
No.
Mr. Simpson?
No.
Miss Wick?
No.
Dr. Pickett?
No.
Ms. Reynard?
No.
Mr. Lacy?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
No.
Seven no.
Your next recommendation?
I recommend approval of the following consulting services, section D.
So.
Second.
Move the second. Any questions? I have one. Last week I asked about for Mr. Griffith if the funds had to come out of general. Was there any follow-up on that?
Yes, and they do have to come out of general.
All right. May we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Abstain.
Mr. Smith?
Not here.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Abstain.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Five yeses to abstain.
Your next recommendation?
I recommend approval of the following contracts and agreements.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second. Any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
And the Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
President Goodwin, if I may real quick, the previous vote, it was four yeses to abstain because we only have six board members present. It wasn't five yeses. Just wanna make note of that.
Yeah, she, yeah, she counts, Mr. Nichols.
Uh, I recommend approval of the following agreement. The Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, it terminates, and we have this year, it terminates this year, so that's why we had to wait the forty-eight hour, we didn't get it on this time. So we wanna have sheriff services going into basketball season for sure.
You said we're doing a waiver?
Well, we, well, we wasn't there for the review session, but we are, so we're not a waiver, but just saying it's different than the review session. Just wanna make note of that.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I have one. In this agreement, it says there's an attachment for the rates and there is no attachment here. What are the actual rates of this agreement?
Uh, I have to get those from, uh, Chief Recker.
Somebody say something.
Sharice says she has a question.
Go ahead, board member says.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Dr. Lawrence, what's this agreement with the sheriff's department? Is it for just the townships and not the city, or are they providing services to all of our high schools? Cause I know Harrison Township, Meadowdale is with the sheriffs, but is this agreement with all of our schools or just this one school?
It's with, it's tailored toward Meadowdale, but whenever we've had an issue in some other schools and we call them, they've responded.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Go ahead, tell your microphone, Mr. Nichols.
Are these sheriffs allowed to use weapons during like the incident with the students?
So the use of force by, um, officers, uh, police officers, sheriff's officers, FBI, all officers, the use of force is a, is a national conversation. So I don't, I don't think it's around if they're allowed to. It's around what's their philosophy on use of force? And in particular, in urban areas, um, where there are, um, poor, black and brown people, in particular males who look like you're not. So it's like, what's, what's the philosophy? And I would just say, uh, the sheriff's office, they, they, they tend to restrain, be restrained more often than not.
One more follow-up. So we're paying a time and a half for them?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I, I really would like to see what, do, do you, do you know I have on hand what we spent last year for these individuals?
I do not.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, no, I do not.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
No.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Abstain.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Five yeses, one no, one abstain.
Does that conclude your recommendations?
That concludes my recommendations, Dr. Goodwin.
All right, Madam Treasurer, your first recommendation.
I recommend the approval of the following temporarily inter-fund advances. We are advancing from general fund to the SRS fund, which is five oh seven, two point four million.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Move the second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Your next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following monthly financials for November twenty twenty-three as reviewed by the finance commis, committee last Thursday.
So moved, second.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols? Seven yeses.
Your next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following, uh, minutes for November.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Seven yeses.
Your next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following purchase requisitions as reviewed last, uh, Tuesday.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second. Any questions?
Question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, this kid, uh, fifteen, PR less than fifteen thousand is not working. That link is broke. Um, I can't pull it up. Um, but I do have a question about the, um, Prodigy Building Solutions. Um, what was the increase by twenty-nine thousand dollars to cover contingency? What was that about?
I have to ask the businessman that it's about.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pressure was used to, um, install, provide the HVAC services at the facility. All of the rooms had, uh, your homestyle heating AC unit, so we were able to bring the HVAC units that were currently there, uh, back up to speed. Uh, the contingency, I will have to review, uh, with Drew. Uh, there were some issues with, uh, they had to do some rewiring and whatnot based on the age and condition of the building, so I can give a more specific answer and get that back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Thank you, Madam President.
The link is fixed.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy.
I have one question for you all. Dr. Lawrence, the smart pass on there is still, is still at the amount for the six schools that it was last week? And our discussions were to increase it to include the other three, so that all the high schools and the little schools were covered in it. You gotta refresh the, that page. Hit it, hit it, page, refresh first.
I did.
No, go back to that one. I hit refresh there.
That is just an error with why not increase it. Let's just, let's, uh, we gotta do that one today.
We do, well, we don't vote on this one. The only question is, if, with the increase, does it take it to the part where we need to vote? That's the question.
Yeah, I think the, I think the increase is four thousand six hundred and something like that. So, yeah, it'll be right over.
Okay.
What you wanna do?
Uh, can you guys find out for sure and then we can put it on after we get out of exec session, so we just know what we're voting on?
Yeah.
That one right here. Okay, and the purchase order, is this the amount that's in here, the ten thousand for the sheriff contract that was just voted on?
Yes, that's a, yes, that's a running renewal, so we just, that's one we had before in the past, we just rolled it over.
All right, your next recommendation?
No, we need to vote on this one.
All right, any other questions? And this is on the purchase orders, not for less than fifteen thousand.
Do you wanna vote on this sheriff separately or?
Not really, it's not a chat. It's not one we voted on at all.
Oh, I see. You're right.
Yeah.
So you said we're just voting on?
The normal thing, the normal thing we vote on. That stuff is just discussion.
All right.
All right.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, your next recommendations?
I recommend this, uh, approval of Zen and Now as reviewed last week.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, does that conclude your recommendations?
Yes.
I recommend the approval of the following board member travel expenses as listed. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols, do you have any comments before we go into executive session that you would like to share with the public?
I do not, but I, I seen, when I was reading this earlier, there was something about CCP with, um, Central State. I don't see it a year ago. It was in the su, um, superintendent's recommendations.
Mr. Nichols, I'm gonna say you are razor sharp. We, uh, we took that off because it shouldn't have been on last week because we actually voted on it the month before. So it's already been approved and ratified, so we didn't wanna do it twice.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right. Pursuant to section one two, one point two two G, two of the higher revised code, I move that this board go into executive session. This meeting is being held to consider the appointment, employment of a public employee. Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
My folks pack it up.
This should be quick.
It looks like the piece of the guy wall.
Okay. This pad, can you send me those markers? You got those markers? Is it the one that you showed me earlier? Look, the record show the Board of Education, Dayton City School District has just completed an executive session during which it considered the appointment, employment of a public employee. I move that we exit executive second session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols? Seven yeses.
Thank you. So we do not need to vote on the purchase order because it is still under the threshold, but we are going to move up to HR recommendation for the three items that were pulled. Okay, and uh, give me one second. So I recommend that we approve the items one, two, three that were pulled on the HR human resources forty-eight hour waiver slide at the salaries of, I believe these are as administrators and as the K twelve system administrator, or knows network. the K twelve system administrator, or no, it's network, it's a network or system. Network engineer at the wages of eighty thousand plus benefits. The help desk assistant management coordinator at seventy-one thousand, one hundred and one eighteen and forty-one cents plus benefits. And the education technology application coordinator at seventy-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-one cents plus benefits. Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. Sampson.
Yes.
Ms. Wick.
Yes.
Dr. Pickett.
Yes.
Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. So now we are into our closing comments here. And as we close out, first, I want to, our board clerks actually did a great job of gathering some items for us. As you all know, we have two board members that this is their last board member, board meeting. And that is Board Member Sampson, Board Member Dr. Pickett. And I see she's getting up now, so I think I got a little bit more time to go to get it. I don't know if she wants you to go, she's coming up or she, she wants you to walk down. Let me, let me see. She's coming up, so. Oh, it's Leslie. So we wanna thank you guys for really the four years of service. I know that you all walked in during a very difficult time. I believe I hear you talk about all the time how your last meeting was here and then you were virtual because that is when we went through the pandemic. You guys did some incredible work over the last four years. You, we've had very spirited debates. We've had disagreements. We've become collective. And we just wanna show you our, our gratitude and thank you for your time on the Board of Education. Y'all don't wanna open a box and show the people what we got, y'all? That's just rude. Just to show them. They all looking like, well, what's in there? I mean, yes, there was some cheese. And that's what we've been dealing with, the meat for two weeks. The excitement, anticipation. None of us have seen it. Who's gonna get there first? All right. There you go. All right, so we're gonna go to closing comments. Board Member Wick.
I get to go first. Thank you for that. Um, I don't know, maybe thank you. Um, I won't take much time because I'll allow our outgoing board members their proper time. But, um, my board reflection for the year is course to thank both Deion and Gabrielle for their service. Not easy work and I appreciate you both. Uh, I had the pleasure to ride a bus with Dr. Goodwin this month. I got up at five o'clock and met her at the bus, um, barn and it was a rainy morning and it was messy. Um, and I really, my mom was a bus driver, so I've always had appreciation for bus drivers. But I certainly have a new level of appreciation for our bus drivers and our families as it was dark in the morning. And those little babies are standing on the corner waiting for their buses and bus drivers are navigating small streets and it's dark and, uh, but kudos to the bus driver that, um, we, route we were covering. Because, um, and Chris, you're gonna have to help me with.
Adrian, it was a good old Didi.
Uh-huh. Didi has, uh, name tags above each seat. We had three routes that day. Every child that entered that bus went properly to their seat and sat down, to the point that I was in their seat and they said, you're in my seat. So, uh, I had to get up. But, um, really some beautiful organization and function that was going on around there. So thank you to the team tonight that presented about the safety of our streets and our students as we prepare to go into winter. Um, all of that work and that collaboration is super important. I appreciate that. A Bruna reflection, my mom went back to, um, high school, uh, or got her GED when she was sixty-one. Uh, so, um, really appreciate the dignity and the compassion that you bring to that valuable asset and encourage all of our family and community, uh, to use that beautiful resource because, um, yeah, it's important. Family literacy and family dynamics are super important. So thank you for that work there. Um, uh, board, um, you know, I'm, I know that this board has taken some heat. You know, we're a, we're a motley crew up here. You know, we have a lot of work. Uh, we've had some chaos. But I am super proud of the work that we've done. Um, I know that, um, we have some long meetings and we dig into things that sometimes that maybe think that we shouldn't, but we are engaged. And, uh, I think that working with this board and the engagement that we've had has been some of the most, um, beautiful work I've been able to do. So I really appreciate this board and, um, the tenacity to do the work that we've done. Because if I compared where we were two years ago right now to where we are now, I would much rather be where we are. And it is due to the work that this board has done. So thank you to my board team that continue to, uh, help inspire us and keep us grow. Um, and, um, yeah, I think thank you to Dr. Lawrence for your continued support. Um, as we, um, have, you know, continue to challenge you and to the beautiful team that he's built. Uh, to my DPS family, the whole family at large, to my, uh, to my Bruin family, my EJ Brown Bruin family. Happy holidays to everybody and, and thank you all very much. I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve.
Thank you. Board Member Reiner.
Thank you, President Goodwin. A couple updates. Um, I just wanted to let the board know. I got, um, some information from the Ohio School Board Association about member services since we are a member of the Ohio School Board Association. The services we've used through them this year. Um, we have, um, uh, saved twenty-five hundred dollars on registration for capital conference. Uh, this year, our district registered fifty-three attendees for OSB workshops and webinars. I'm probably responsible for a large number of those because I watch a lot of webinars. Um, forty-five of those registrations were free thanks to our OSB membership and I'm grateful for all the work that OSB does. Um, legislation update. I wanted to give you guys an update. Um, it is a busy, busy time at the State House, uh, before we reach the end of the legislative year and the, um, legislative calendar resets. I wanted to give you some, um, information about what's happening in the State House. First of all, Governor DeWine has made his pick for the position of Department of Educational Workforce, and that is Steve Dakin. Um, he is very well experienced in many education settings. Um, so I'm looking forward to see how, uh, he will head up the Department of Educational Workforce. Um, a couple of bills that we should know about. House Bill one eighty-seven, it was sponsored by reps Thomas Hall and Adam Bird. Um, this was a really interesting bill. Um, there is not a lot of, um, it obviously passed the House and Senate and is, um, going through some reconciliations between the two and then it's gonna go to the government, the governor's desk for signing. Um, it has some pretty, um, serious implications for districts like ours. Um, it, it expands the homestead exemption and it reimburses, uh, school districts for only one half of the revenue we will learn, we will earn from the expanded homestead exemption. While all other affected political subdivisions, including joint vocational school districts, will receive full reimbursement from the state. Um, there's no good reason for that to happen, um, and it's incredibly frustrating to see that in another way, uh, public school districts like Dayton Public is losing very much needed state funding. Um, it is estimated that this change will result in ninety-seven million dollars of lost revenue for districts over the next three years. Um, uh, there's a lot of, uh, legislation. I'm not gonna read everything, but, um, some other things you guys should know about. Um, I will say I'm gonna flag, um, House Bill sixty-eight and House Bill six. Um, these are incredibly, incredibly damaging bills for the wellbeing of our students. For all the lip service that is done for the emotional, mental health services and needs for our students. This will do nothing but undermine it and children will die because of these bills. I'm not being dramatic when I say that. It is so devastating to see these bills pass. They are headed to the governor's desk. If you are at all interested in learning about these bills, read up on them, um, House Bill sixty-eight and House Bill six. This, um, these are bills that will forcibly detransition kids and goes in the face of every single medical recommendation by respected medical institutions. So if you are opposed to this bill, please reach out to the governor's office and tell them to not sign this bill. Um, the Senate unanimously passed Senate Bill one sixty-two. Um, it will require public schools to provide certain academic intervention services to each student who demonstrates a limited level in math and/or English language arts. Um, and that's all I'm gonna bring up today in terms of legislation. Um, if you need more information, if you, uh, have any questions, feel free to reach out to me by my district email, jreiner@danepublic.com. Happy to give you more of my, um, my opinions on some of these bills. Um, and lastly, I would like to extend my deep gratitude to Board Member Sampson and Board Member Dr. Pickett. It has been an honor to work with you two. Um, I knew you both before you decided to run. I am incredibly grateful for the service that you've given to this district for the last four years. Again, it is probably the strangest four years that you probably could have experienced. Um, you guys attended board meetings in January and February of twenty-twenty. And then our March twenty-twenty meeting on March twelfth, we, um, were told that we were shutting down the next day and nothing was ever the same. We've not always agreed, um, but we respect each other and we communicate and we work together. And for that, I am incredibly, incredibly grateful for your service. I am grateful, Dr. Pickett, for your unwavering belief in protecting women in the workplace. Um, and I'm just deeply grateful for the dedication you both have to the city and to this district. And I am excited to welcome our new board members and I hope to see our outgoing board members regularly in the boardroom.
Board Member Lacy.
The Finance Committee met Thursday and we went over the, the financial statements and they were in good order. I am very honored to have served these past two years on the Finance Committee with two fine Finance Committee members, Mr. Sampson and Dr. Pickett. And, and I, I really appreciate you both. Uh, um, Dr. Pickett, I, I wanna like, I, I, I've learned a lot from you. I really appreciate your work on the, on especially like the International School. I think that's one of the crowning gems or one of the, uh, your performance. Um, Mr. Sampson, um, when I ran four years ago and I, if you remember, I lost to you by one vote and I, I'd like to thank that one person. Cause I, if it were not for that one person, I might not have gotten to know you. And, uh, and, um, and also I, I really enjoyed those two years of not being on the board. So I'll miss you both. Thank you.
Mr. Nichols.
Um, like I said, um, thank you too for, you know, spending the time here as a board member. I might not know a lot about y'all, but I know that y'all did a lot of that. Um, but I have a question. I looked over the votes and I don't see my name on any of the votes.
We will get you added in our minutes in your, in your role, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Treasure.
I have a good news. Uh, Moody's, uh, I have a good news. Moody's upgraded us from, uh, for our bond rating from AA two to AA one. This is a very, very good for our district. Um, Board Member Sampson and Board Member Dr. Pickett, it has been a pleasure working with you. I appreciate the dedication and the hard work, uh, you put to make our district moving the right way. I wish you the best of luck and success in your future endeavors. Thank you very much and good luck. To Merry Christmas to all DPS students and families. I appreciate you and be safe.
Ms. Powell.
I, I just wanna say thank you to, uh, Board Member Sampson and Board Member Dr. Pickett. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to you both to some extent. I know, uh, Board Member Sampson has stopped by Jackson Center, uh, but I do appreciate the work that all of the board does collectively. Keeps us on our toes. Uh, thank you for your service and welcome to our two new members. And please, if anybody ever has any questions, my door is always open. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lawrence.
All right, um, first, I just, I only have to look at my notes. I'm just gonna look around the room. Uh, Brother Dr. Jones, I appreciate you. We have some difficult things that we go through and you stand tall. Um, Ms. Dooley would not be here were not for you training me to be a principal. Uh, Akisha, um, I'm so glad you're back. Uh, I still owe your superintendent dinner, lunch, dinner, lunch, breakfast. I did everything I could and I'm glad you're back. You are amazing. My partner, uh, Lisa Meyer, could not do this work without you. I sleep well because we work together and I know things will just get done. Uh, Sharon Gil, who was our co-cabinet member of the month for her phenomenal work with Tate Flight, CSU MLUs, taking kids to Sinclair for trips. Uh, she's involved in our Sinclair work, which is gonna be huge. I really appreciate you. You've been amazing this year. Uh, Denise, I'm really not, um, by trade an emotional person, but I could not, I mean, this is, you, we, you know, right? You already, we already know. Uh, uh, Alex is back there. She's our other co-cabinet member of the month, uh, for amazing work on the podcast videos. Um, website redesign with Ms. Goins, the videos. Um, she's our only millennial on cabinet. And, uh, she, uh, she gets us together. And we, we appreciate that, but to keep us current. Uh, Adriana, uh, this is special team back there and that's really like what I'm all about is, is, is team. And then as I look to the corner speaking of team, I started this journey as a principal with Derby Marshall. The two assistant principals were, um, Ms. Sharon Goins and Judas Spurlock. Ms. Judas Spurlock was now chief of the elementary school and Sharon is director of equity. Um, I, I love them. They are ride or die, loyal, tough. Um, and going to make sure that, um, if there's anybody who needs to say something to me that I don't see, uh, they can pick up the phone or, or call me and say, hey, you're not, you're not seeing this. Think this through, David. So I, uh, for the people who sit on cabinet, I appreciate and admire and respect the team and the bond that we have. Um, thank you, Joanie. Uh, amazing presentation. Always great talking to you. And you know, the sky's the limit for you. Say the word is done. And then happy holidays to board members and their families, students' families and staff. Uh, the community writ large. Um, I already mentioned the cabinet members. And then finally, um, certainly, um, I wish Dr. Pickett and, uh, my brother, Deion Sampson, uh, uh, well to do in the future. And Mr. Sampson, uh, I, I'm gonna miss you because you and I are fellow members of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. We are welcoming another member of that fraternity, Dr. Bailey. And unfortunately, there's a member of Phi Beta Sigma.
Unfortunately.
Yes.
The only true brother and sister.
There's a member of.
The only true brother and sister.
There's a member, uh, you know, for those of you who know about the Divine, and it's a member of Phi Beta Sigma, coming, Eric Walker. And, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna get him together.
Careful with your words.
We're gonna, we're gonna get him together. So, uh, and High Dr. Turner, he used to be a member of our creative team, brilliant, and I love the work you're doing out there in Columbus. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. One second. Ms. Kidd, do I need to just say other stuff while I get corrected? All right. All right, couple of things to knock out. I will start first with updating everyone in the community on where we are in our superintendent search process. The nine of us, cause the new board members were included as well, we have conducted, I believe it was the second round of interviews. There will be a communication going out about the finals phase. And this is the phase where anyone in the community can nominate individuals to serve on those panels and submit questions and do those things. And it, it is an opportunity for you just to be involved in the process in that way. I believe the nominations or do we do January 12th, 2024, to submit questions are due January 12th, 2024. And there is a good amount of information in the communication I have. So please read that if you want to know if you have questions about it. Shoot an email to any board member, cause again, all seven of us are equally invested and actively have the same information that we can share with anybody at any time in this community. On top of that, my next piece for you all. Sorry, I opened one thing and it took me to another group. So I just wanna recap, uh, I'm coming at the end of my term as president, which it was completely different than what I thought it was. And I will say that to any person. Until you serve in the seat, you really don't know what the work is. And just reflecting on kind of the year here, it was, it was a fun ride. It's, it's been really good. And I wanna say two things that I ran on as a board member was increasing student activities and increasing the amount of employee rights and work-life balance here that we have here. And I'm happy that the things that I've been a part of this year have stayed true to both of those. Policy-wise, some things that I just wanna highlight that came about this year. Board proclamations, which I'm excited that whenever someone does take that up, you actually can't get a proclamation from the board. Take us up on that. Celebrate the win. Celebrate individuals who do things in education. Similar to how you can do in any other jurisdiction. The employee referral program, which up until about a month ago was limited to just, I believe, two groups, is now open to any employee in the district. And it is a good amount of, of compensation that we are giving individuals to help be recruiters for us. And that is really important to us maintaining our workforce because again, the people who work here are the best promoters of what it's like to be in here. And they're the individuals who people will talk to. The remote work policy, as a millennial, I believe in the remote work policy. And I'm so happy that we were able to get that through. We are still figuring out how to work it in some spaces. But coming into 2023, when the world changed after 2020, it was, it's just imperative that as the workforce shifts, that we are making those shifts. And I'm happy that we got that done. The administrators' clock in and out procedure. Again, we got a lot of professionals in here that do what they're supposed to do. And we should treat them as professionals and as a team, we were able to make that possible. The community use policy of our buildings. Our process is not perfect, but our policy did, did speak to some of the needs that we heard about some of the drill teams and other smaller community groups that do things for our students, but they don't have access to our buildings. We were able to put that in policy this year, that they also can have access to our buildings as similar to what our coaches and other groups that do things for children in our groups. Let's see. We standardize some expectation and some professionalism around how we communicate each other in emails. We got some rules here, like it's okay, like you, it's, it's, it's good to see that those standards are there because there, there were some times that you would read some emails that just got away from people and you had to remind them that this is a place of work. And we still gotta treat people, even when you disagree, with some level of respect. The professional hiring policy, as, as a group, we, we stood in, on internal candidates having the same opportunity to compete with external candidates on any position that is available in the district. And before that policy, that just wasn't something that was practiced. So now I'm, I'm just excited that people, no matter if you work here, you still have a shot, similar to people who don't work here, to go for any job that's available in this district. Our rehiring policy, we didn't have one before. And now we have standardized again how individuals are attracted HR when they leave us. Just the information that allows them to be able to come back to us, no matter who is here. What the documentation says, kinda outweighs what individuals say about you. The free admission to district athletic events. Firm the leader that our kids should be in any space that we have available to them. And although only, I think 10% of our students do athletics, we are moving up more and more in arts and other school activities after school. And just seeing that they have a place to be, I'm just happy that this board agreed with that one. And we are continuing to make that a reality, that our kids can be in these spaces and they can meet the standard that we set for them. The increased fundraising opportunities for student activity groups and student athletic groups. Students now at any of our concessions can sign up in their teams or receive 10% of the proceeds that are raised or that are, of the sales there. Great opportunity, even when we look at our junior class, our senior class. The Dungeons and Dragons Club, any of those groups can now take advantage of that fees to put some type of financing into some of the things that they wanna do. And it helps us as well be able to staff some of these places with student workers. Uh, changing our policy that allows anyone in this district to speak with board members. You can't solve every problem. We can't take up every problem, but we're people just like anyone else. And removing that barrier of reminding you, yes, we all believe some level of the processes that we have here. And if we are the ones that guide you through that process, that's great. But it's, it's just great to be able to have that open level of communication. We established a whistle, whistleblower protection process and policy. Again, no one should ever feel like they can't say something that's going on with them. And they should have those abilities to put that information out so individuals can help them get through it and not feel that their livelihood is in jeopardy for speaking on something that may be unethical or illegal or just something that they need to put out there. We added professional development programs to our non-union employees, which most of our unions, I believe, already have it. So giving that level of, of investment back into the individuals who run this district is amazing. And I believe you can start that program in January for the first time of us putting, I believe, $5,000 toward your growth with us in this district. And adding evaluation processes at every level of the district, which this was already happening on the academic side by state standards, but pulling it out to every level of the organization, including the Board of Education, with how we do things is just a way that we just show we are part of this process and people should be given an opportunity to know what's going on, what you expect of them. And when they meet it, they should be celebrated. If they don't meet it, they should be given the opportunity to correct in those type of sessions. Some other things I just wanna highlight too. First, I wanna give a shout out to Joyce Stokes, who I think is kind of those small stories that you get to hear from time to time about some of the processes here. I don't know if you all remember last year, last school year in the spring, when we had a presentation about our grad program, our, not a grad program, our GED program and students that may have left us prior to receiving their high school diploma, but are coming back to us in those spaces. Ms. Stokes, we have a vendor that kinda classifies and looks at some of our transcripts. And they do those. And we had some individuals who have been trying to get their transcripts from decades ago. And we do this process. We discovered that every vendor isn't doing everything that they say that they're doing. And I'm not gonna tell you guys who the person is, but it was, it was a great story to see that Ms. Stokes went beyond the level of duty required to find a transcript that had been, a person had been seeking for years, so that person can get into a GED program. And just knowing, it's those type of stories of, even though you're not a student anymore, doesn't mean you weren't a part of this district. So kudos for going above and beyond on that piece right there. I also wanna highlight too, some of the, the wins that I got to be a part of this year. My focus has been more on operations than anything when it comes in my second year on the board. And again, as a board, we changed the workforce for our transportation drivers in very meaningful ways. We approved and made sure that funding was allocated and that a process happened that every school bus in our district had air conditioning on it, which is huge for individuals who spend the majority of their workday on the school bus. We also added in some safety features for them this year, putting rear cameras on those buses. So when they back up, even though you're not supposed to back up, but you gotta back up sometimes that we are, you're just making sure that you don't have to stop and wait for a supervisor or someone else to come out so you can move that bus, which takes in the time of that. And we also added intercom systems to the buses, which, because this is the only classroom where the instructor has to have their back to those individuals the entire time they're with them. So we are helping, or we helped really mitigate really that high stress environment of you yelling your entire day at individuals or when you're trying to communicate something. In the schools, we added speakers to the classrooms to kinda help again with individuals who need to be heard in the classrooms, but can't, don't want to overtalk aloud or that. And to help with students that have hearing loss. We've added speakers in our gymnasiums as well, again, to help with the classroom setting of it as well as the events that occur outside of that. We've added safety equipment, head safety equipment to our football programs, to all of our football players, beginning to protect again our most valuable asset, students themselves. Think, other than that, in this role, I mean, I learned, being a board president, it's a title that comes with no additional benefits. It is a title that people think it gives you more authority, but it really gives you a well-found respect for all of the administrative assistants, the, uh, what are clerical, confidential secretaries, clericals throughout, because that is what the board president does. You are responsible for every aspect of meetings you're running. You are responsible for communicating with every person on the board, no matter how you feel about them personally or if you disagree. It is still your responsibility to get information through and keep us moving. And I'm proud that all seven people here and the two coming on, I mean, we've done that. We communicate. We get it done. It's, uh, I hear it all the time, like if, when people tell us, no, no, I've been going for a minute, Ms. Kidd, you got that up there yet? All right, that's good. No, I'm, I'm gonna wrap it up though. But people say all the time, when if you're, if you are a 7-0 board, then you're a rubber stamp. If any of you disagree, then you're dysfunctional. I would rather be on a board that is perceived to be dysfunctional, where stuff really happens and conversations about real stuff happens, than on a board that is viewed and acts as if they don't care enough to read the fine details, to get involved and to know those things. I know this group knows that we're not dysfunctional. I know this group knows the amount of work that goes in to everything that we've done this entire year. It's a lot of work. And it ain't for the weak or the faint of heart. You gotta have thick skin to sit up here day after day and listen to people criticize everything you do. And I'm gonna say, Board Member Sampson, I'm a missed calling you. And asking you, should I send this email? Cause that's my guy right there. Even though he take me off the edge and he cleans it up for me, but that is still the number one person in that, I probably still am gonna cry, I mean, honest with you. This job just stopped our relationship. This is just something that we did together for this period in life. I think, Dr. Pickett, I love the fact that anytime, if I don't know what people are saying, I can call you and I can give somebody your number and say, call her. She will answer if she's available and she will get you through what you did. And I appreciate both, everything that you both brought to this board, whether it was something I agree with or whether it was something I didn't. I think you both stood on your beliefs and you pushed for the communities that put you here. So, add a second reading of policy, minus the one that was pulled because it went too legal. One second. All right. In so much as the Board of Education is committed to continuing our dangerous policies, rules and regulations, manuals in the committee, which was appointed, has been working towards that goal. The following is brought at this time for a second reading and compliance with the board files. Now therefore, being resolved at the Board of Education of Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby exception adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook and policies, rules and regulation. File EEA Eligibility Zone for Pupil Transportation, GDN Evaluations of Support Staff. I move that we adopt these policies with their second.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wake?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
And yes, Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Seven answers.
Thank you. Board Member Sampson.
Thank you so much, Board President. Um, I'm not gonna be very long. Um, I wanna say thank you to my family, who over the last four years have, um, shared their, um, son, brother, dad, husband, uh, with the community. I am so grateful for them, um, allowing me to do what I do. Um, to my friends who I grew up with, went to school with, went to high school and college with, who I worked with in the district. I wanna say thank you for allowing, um, our friendship to be consistent and allowing me to be Deion and not Board Member Sampson. Um, I wanna say thank you to my frat brothers. Um, I just want you to know, I tried my best to be an advocate for our community. Um, I wanna say thank you to Brother Hashim and Zakiya Jabar. Um, we knew them as racial justice now. Um, some people look at them as hail raisers. But I wanna say thank you to them publicly, because you showed me years ago that fighting and speaking up against inequity was absolutely all right to do. Mr. Lacy, on December 4th, 2019, December 4th is a very good day, by the way. It was made official that 6,468 voters went to the polls on November 5th and elected me to occupy the third seat of Dayton Public School Board. Mr. Lacy, I was mad at that one person as well. Um, but I had to get over it because my mother said it was her. Once March hit, I was so mad that you were not in this seat. I'm just being honest. I'm so mad. But I too am grateful for the 6,468 voters who elected me. And I wanted you to know that I tried my best to advocate and speak up for our community. I also wanna encourage all parents, community members and advocates to personally start attending school board, committee, community and parent meetings. If you feel like you have something to bring to the table to make this district better, consider putting your name in the hat for the 25 election. Fighting and advocating on social media doesn't do much. You gotta get involved. Grab a seat at the table. And if they try not to let you sit, bring your own chair. Mr. Nichols, it has been an absolute pleasure, sir, to see you advocating and speaking up for students in the district. Sir, you are indeed a rock star. Keep becoming. And lastly, to all of the employees in this district, um, I was reminded over the last four years, there are absolutely some amazing people in this district. And some of them are in this room. And so because I am opposite of Dr. Lawrence, I'm an emotional creature. But I'm not gonna give you the pleasure of day to see me cry in front of all of you. So thank you, Dayton Public Schools and this community for allowing me four years to serve and to this board. It has been an honor and a privilege. As an introvert, you may not have seen me in public doing a lot of talking, but this board will tell you, I argued and fought for positions behind closed doors. I didn't do a lot of talking in front. This task was difficult as an introvert. And so somebody asked me, well, what am I gonna do? I'm going to be at home. Um, and you will continue to see me because I'm not new to board meetings. Um, I used to come just to sit in the back with a bag of popcorn, just to see what was gonna jump off. So to this board, um, and to Brother Walker, even, well, never mind, and to Brother Bailey, I know you two will do great. And I just encourage you during your next four years to remember your why. And don't allow any system to make you sway from your why. Thank you. Thank you, Board President.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first I just wanna wish, uh, speedy recovery to Dr. Burden, she's not here with us today, and I'm truly hoping that she can come back quickly. So, get well soon. Uh, before I say my, my goodbyes, I would like to request that as soon as this board hires an internal auditor, that they spend some time looking into the historical records, documentation of processes and inventory for our former mid, uh, provider, CBTAS. We know that they had an employee that exceeded our budget for the last twenty years, kinda just to put it into perspective, it's like, if I want to make a party, I'm going to pay someone to tell me how many people I can invite and what I'm gonna get served for dinner. This has been done for the last twenty years. Um, they've been paid for years of asset management, discover, uh, disaster recovery and cybersecurity. And it is, it is very possible that they have not done all the, all the work, and they have not been, um, they have not been some checks and balances as far as that is concerned. So I think it's something that is, it will be really important for you guys to look at. Um, we lost our, um, IT director, because you started questioning some of the unusual vendor-client dynamics, that includes, um, laptops that are unaccounted for, thousands of laptops that we don't know where they are. Um, and there were clear conflicts of interest that I really found alarming, like, um, how do we have one individual tell us what services we need to buy from them, how much to buy, or no records were kept for a very long time. A district with thirteen thousand students, we have only two people who actually take care of our equipment, one person, uh, does laptops, another person does Chromebooks. Um, and one of those is espouse of the person buying the equipment that continues to get lost. So those are the kinds of things that we need to look into, when I talk about transparency, these are the kinds of things that I've been very concerned about. I am walking away today so that I can actually have the, the, the freedom to talk about these things and tell you how concerned I am. While CBTAS is not our mid contractor, we still have, um, some, um, relationships with them. So we have to make sure that we as a district are taking care of, um, what we need to take care of. Um, I wanna say thank you to Joe Lacy for keep coming back. That, that, that's special, that's a special thank you for you, for wanting to come back every time. And I wanna say thank you to all my board members, um, thank you, um, board member Sampson for staying in this, um, interesting ride with me. I ran for school board because, um, like many parents, I had something to, to say, I wanted to say something, and I wasn't heard. And so, at that time, I wanted, um, something for our ELL students, there was really no plan. We've been a welcoming city since twenty eleven, and in twenty eighteen, we really had no plan, and we had dismantled our welcome beltment. So, I felt the need to, um, come here and, and, and express, make the case that we desperately needed more services for our ELL students, because in reality, those students are the ones that are gonna catch up eventually. And so it's been an honor to represent a portion of our, uh, Dayton diverse community. And it's because of the community that we have the international school, that's a correction I wanna say, Joe Lacy, um, or member Lacy. No, this, we have an international school because there is a need for an international school. And we have an international school because there was dozens of people who stayed seven hours behind trying to explain to this board that there was a desperate need for this kind of school for our students. And so I wanna say thank you for everyone who showed up, and, and I feel like we're moving in the right direction. Um, thank you so much to, uh, board member, Justin. I wish I could have your, your come and not, and not really speak up, because I want the public to know. I want the public to know that when there was a sexual harassment accusation, all board member Riner wanted was a protection for future board members. That's all she wanted, and now we have that, so thank you so much for doing that. Uh, but I'm also going to tell you, um, that I hope that you speak up more than you do. I understand that you're in a very precarious situation, you're a white woman who cannot speak up. But I do want people to know that they're having conversations, text message conversations, to a white board member saying, I am not your slave, this is not a plantation. And when people get triggered like that, and they speak to a board member or a fellow superintendent counterpart, that's a problem. That means that there's something that we need to focus on from within, to make sure that when, uh, we deal with people that we don't bring our own triggers in such way. And I wanna apologize for that behavior to you, and I commend you, because you could have made a big deal about this, because it was incredibly insulting, and yet you kept quiet, so. But I do hope, I'm gonna be calling you on that, make sure, I'm gonna be watching you, make sure that if something needs to be speaking out, that you will speak up. Thank you, everyone, and I wanna thank every person who, um, shared their knowledge with me. And I came in as a squeaky wheel, and I'm gonna continue to be a squeaky wheel, I will come over and give you a check, so that's all I have to say today, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, most adjourned.
So will.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, Madam President, may we have a vote?
President Zogdwein?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wake?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reina?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholas?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Your chair?